This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 4th, 2023 meeting of the City Council Property Committee. We're meeting remotely, and this meeting is being recorded by e-media and will be available on eastampmedia.org. Councillors and participants are gathering hybrid, I'm gathering remote, I apologize, on the order extended until March 2025, which allows us to do so. I remind both the members of the council and the public, participating remote, remain mute until recognized by the chair, and also for the public to please move your cameras for the duration of the meeting, unless you're participating in public speak time. This meeting is hereby called to order. My first item of business is we did receive minutes from Secretary Zaret, and someone's joining, okay. From Councillor Zaret, and at this time I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 27, 2023.
So move, oh, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in the second to approve the minutes of April 27th. Any discussion? Hearing none. Councillor Derby?
Aye.
Councillor Zaret?
Aye.
Councillor Krasinski?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero to approve the minutes from April 27th. We do have an opportunity for public speak. If anyone from the public would like to take up to three minutes to say anything tonight, they should feel free to do so now at this point in the meeting. Not seeing anyone. Does anyone else see anyone? Oh, I do see a hand raised. Looks like Ms. Button. Please, your camera is on, and feel free to unmute yourself and speak. You have up to three minutes.
Okay, I'm sure it won't take that long. Thank you very much. So I'm not sure how the discussion about the three properties have evolved up until this point. I've looked for the recordings online. I have not located them, but I'm sure that's my fault, nobody else's. But I just would like to take the opportunity to remind the councillors that affordable housing is important, but there are also other community needs, and I'm sure that you will keep this in mind as you discuss this going forward. And in particular, I'm thinking about the libraries, the community center, the senior center, and the need for perhaps a youth center. And the reason I raise this is because up until this moment in time, I think that the preponderance of thinking has been to have separate facilities for all these different things based on historic whatever. But as I'm sure you're aware, the Surgeon General came out with a report recently about the impact of loneliness on society in general and the need for connections, and I just would urge the committee and the council to think about that, you know, as other needs are proposed. I think that going forward, there is an opportunity to co-house some of these needs in one facility, which is not the way the funding structure is currently operating. But this is an opportunity really in the future to think about things differently. So that's my comment. Thank you for the opportunity to listen to me.
Thank you. Of course, we don't respond directly to anyone's particular comments, but in general, everyone should know that we take everything under advisement, under consideration, and give due thought to what everyone says. We do our best to listen carefully to those items and put everything together. So thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? No one else from the public. Thank you. At this, at this point, I'd like to move on to the material that had been submitted by our consultant, Emily Ennis, and who would outline the process to date as to where we are. I think we're rounding the corner here, and we're just about set to go to a recommendation to the full city council, which is our role here tonight. Emily, any thoughts for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As directed at the end of the previous meeting, I tried to put everything together that I had heard, obviously checked in with yourself, just to make sure that we were on the same page as far as what we'd heard in terms of priorities from the committee. So what you have in front of you, and I can put it on screen if needed, is the draft motion. It's set up as a draft memorandum to City Council and just a reminder that it is a draft, but it brings forward the three ideas that this group had thought were priorities in terms of recommending that they be included in the mayor's negotiations with the designated preferred developer, and then two items that were of concern to this committee, but maybe didn't rise to the level of something that would be, need to be substantially considered in the negotiation, something that would be desirable. So I've put those together in a draft recommendation, again, sent it first to Jeff Bag and Michael Owens, city staff, then obviously coordinating with yourself, Mr. Chair, and happy to, as I said, put it on the screen or go over anything that you might, any questions you might have about it, but it stands as a draft for your consideration. I may have lost sound at my end. I can't hear you.
That was me. I apologize. I was just saying if the councillors please, we'd be happy to have it put up on the screen.
I'll do that right now. Oops, wrong button. Just a second.
Councillor Derby, please.
I was just gonna say.
I know you can't see.
Well, no, if it doesn't go on the screen, I have it on my device. So I just wanted to say I read through it, and I think that it reflects our discussion from last time. So I feel good about it. I just, I did have a question though, when the time is right. So just let me know when that would be.
Yeah, I, well, it's up on the screen. It's not quite large enough for me.
Let me scroll. I was trying to show both pages simultaneously.
Essentially, what I'm seeing here is that the mayor, and I'll read parts of it, the mayor shall negotiate an agreement with the preferred development team, which shall substantially include the following three provisions. Retain the auditorium and gym space at the Pepin School for public use, as stated in page seven of the proposal for the nominal cost, as described in the interview of March 23, 22, 2023. That's one. Two, provide public parking and children's playground at the Maple School, similar to the Maple Concept Plan dated May 25th, and available on the city website. Three, to provide environmentally sensitive landscaping, including the installation of native plantings, consistent with the evaluation criteria of number five for the environmental sustainability and commitment on page eight of the proposal to pursue LEED certification and receive Enterprise Greenfield certification. The council then would recommend that the agreement provide a timeline of payments related to the proposed $1,285,000 purchase price and provide access to the Pepin Gym as feasible during the construction period, unless prevented by temporary safety requirements or the renovation of the space itself, as described in the interview of March 22, 2023. So I think that summarized where we were. Councillor Derby, I think chimed in and agreed. Councillor Zaret? Was that your understanding of where we were?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This encapsulates, I feel, and well describes verbally the conversations that we had in the last meeting, both in regard to what was discussed as well as kind of the hierarchy of how it appears in terms of provisions versus recommendations. So I'm satisfied with the language.
Any other thoughts and comments before I would say we take a motion? Councillor Derby?
So the question I had was, I just wanted to make sure that the first group of items are under the category of non-negotiable for the negotiating party. So what I mean by that is that they are strong enough to withstand if the negotiating party didn't want those things, that they wouldn't be able to say, I don't want this one piece, so I'm gonna take it out. I just want to make sure that we have some clarity on that.
I have some thoughts about that, and generally if we're going to do this, there's a couple of levels. One is an absolute requirement that the negotiator is required to do A, B, and C, or one, two, and three. And what we, the language that's there, to me, kind of gives some flexibility, yet states the clear case that it better darn well look substantially similar to what we've described in those, in those requirements, in those, in the proposal and in the RFP. So in anything that it says substantially to what I had read, in conformance with. So there's a difference in my mind, and that would be that if we want to make it an absolute requirement, that's another level, and I think Emily and Jeff would agree with me on that, that that is another level, and it would say requirement. And I think that's worthy of discussion if you'd care to, Councillor Derby. Councillor Derby, back to you.
Yeah, so my thought is that I believe that retaining the gym and also even retaining parking, which I don't think would be potentially as controversial, so I'll just stay with the gym, should be a requirement. I think that that piece is such a substantial piece from the very beginning of the RFP to, you know, to now, that I would like to see that be a non-negotiable requirement. So that's just my two cents.
I feel like that's a worthy, a worthy statement. At this point, don't see any reason why I wouldn't stand behind that, and I do see it as the number one priority. It does make it very clear that that's a requirement of the negotiations that we expect to see. Would there be, is there any other discussion about this? Councillor Zaret?
No, I agree. I mean, I think that part of the selection criteria or why they ranked so high was because the applicant had expressed an interest in preserving the gym. So I would think that would be a part of the foundation of the project and almost implicit in the project they had proposed. But I do agree to some degree that using the strongest language possible to basically hold them to that intention is not a bad idea. I agree that the parking is less onerous, but but because of that, I think it should not be such a big issue. And then the environmental piece, I mean, if we're gonna go for two, we might as well go for all three. So I would just defer though to the planner and the consultant as to exactly how that language should appear compared to what we see right now.
I'd be happy to turn it over to Emily and into Jeff if you have comments.
So looking at the language again, and I'm just going to throw this back up so you can see exactly what I'm looking at. I think you can actually accomplish that with one word, which may be easier than redrafting. So in here, we've got the mayor shall negotiate an agreement with the preferred development team, which shall substantially include the following three provisions. I think if you just take out substantially, so it's which shall include the following three provisions, that probably covers it. The substantially was the modifier that gave potentially, if interpreted that way, could potentially give some flexibility. If you take it out and just have shall include, it makes it much stronger.
It certainly does.
The question becomes in that case is, is there anything that shouldn't be a shall include in those three? You know, Councillor Zaret suggested that if you have one, you have all three, and that could, you know, that's at your discretion, but if you did not want to have something that rose to the level, the shall include of those three, I think you would have two options. One is you have a shall include, a shall substantially include, and a recommended, or you have a shall include and a recommended. So that would be your other option to re-categorize one of those into the lower group or to have three separate groups.
Councillor Zaret?
So thank you. To me, I think the most important piece is the retention of the auditorium and gym, and so I think the strongest language should apply to that. In terms of the other two, I'm kind of on the fence. Obviously, both parking and environmental sustainability are important to me. I would hope that if it was given as more of a strongly worded option as opposed to a requirement, that this, the applicant would read the tea leaves and understand that these are priorities to the community. So I guess I could go either way. I would be interested to hear what my longstanding colleague on the council, Councillor Derby, thinks about that, where we should go with this.
Councillor Derby?
So I did see Jeff's hand, so I'll be brief, which is, I could go either way, to be completely honest. I feel like all three of them are important, but I agree with Councillor Zaret that the retention of the gym is, and the auditorium is, the most important. So reserve in the strongest language for that. I think for simplicity's sake, like having parking and a play structure at Maple and using native planning, those are not, those are not going to be deal breakers when negotiating. So I think that if we included those, it really wouldn't be much of a problem. So I guess I'll kind of leave it with ambiguity there, and I'll ask Jeff if he has something to add.
Jeff?
Thank you. I do think this is a really good discussion, and I think it's important to have now. It's, we're probably gonna repeat it at the full council. I agree with the gym, and I mean, the auditorium is baked in, and I agree with the gym conversation 100%. I would just, I guess I would offer that the importance of the playground and parking were embedded in all of the previous processes. So, you know, it started in that 2020 downtown strategic plan, and that's what, that's what the community input, you know, that was high on the list for community input. And then we had sort of that iterative process. We had two sets of committees who worked through, kind of grinded through some of that additional details. And that's really when we came up with affordable housing as the top priority, but parking was second, and then the third level of that was the community space. And I just, I'm just adding some of this for some context, because I do think that if you were a resident, especially around Maple Street, who participated in any of those discussions, your expectation would be that those things were gonna be included. And then, and then we took that very seriously, and when we got the mass development funding to continue to help us prepare the RFP, we, you know, we spent, we have spent $60,000 worth of mass development funds to survey the properties. I mean, that was a big part of it, but then we conceptualized plans. We had several meetings where it wasn't tons of people, but we had people who looked at those plans and said, yes, that looks good, that the fit test plan, that's the one that's referenced. So I would, I would think that requiring it makes a lot of sense. And I think as it's labeled here with similar, I think that gives a little bit of flexibility. So, you know, if the plan shows 15, I don't remember now, 15 or 19, so let's say it shows 15, and they can squeeze in 13, you know, and they're justifying that, you know, that's similar. And then the playground, you know, space is on the Maple Street side, and they work on that, and that's similar. I think that that's what the community would, that's my take on what the community would expect to see come out of this project. So I would just urge the committee to really try to hold on to that. And I think I was gonna say something else, and I can't remember what it was, but.
If it comes, we'll give you a chance again.
Okay, thanks.
I wanted to say that I really do see one and two as being something that I certainly could support as shall. Three, I would be happy to go to substantially include, and the other would be a recommendation, the other two items. If we, so Councillor Zaret, you had another comment?
I'm at the exact place that you are, Chair, that one and two shall, three substantially include, and the others as listed. So I'm in consensus with you.
Councillor Derby?
I'll just add my two cents that I agree with that, and it sounds like we have some consensus.
I think it does sound like we have some consensus. That being said, the consultants, any other comments before we entertain a vote?
No, Mr. Chair.
Motion, rather. Mr. Bag?
Yeah, sorry. And this is more just to make sure we at least have the conversation here. You know, the Arch proposal had eight market rate units, and during the interview, you know, they said that they could be flexible with changing the market rate units to affordable. We don't know the details. We didn't ask them a detailed question about what that means or how it would work, but I did want to just, I think that's the one last hanging issue. It didn't come up at the last meeting. I was kind of going over my notes, going over the RFP. That would be the one thing that could be good to talk about as this group, and, you know, just going off of the conversation, you know, the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, I spoke briefly with the chairperson, and she's like, yeah, it could be either way. You know, it's like, it would be great. Could understand why they have market rate units in the proposal as well, but maybe that's a recommendation. Maybe that's one of the third, like that third level to just see if that goes in the negotiation and is something that's viable to pursue. But that, other than that, I just wanted to put that one item on the table before we, before we kind of wrap up.
Your restatement of the question that you're putting on the table for a recommendation, that there be no market rate units? Is that what you're suggesting?
Right. It would be, so something along the lines of where the applicant provides 100% of the units as affordable. And it's just to show the comparison that they had eight in the eight market rate units proposed. They offered the flexibility, and it's just something where, I just wanted to put it out there to kind of bat it around a little bit. It might come up at the public hearing, so it'd be good to have the conversation here at some level.
You know, my initial take on that is I don't, I wouldn't want to muddy the waters and tie anybody's hands if the proposal was such that it could financially be viable, given the way it is. Kind of wanted to leave well enough alone, and let, if the mayor could negotiate that out, great. I would have no objection to it. But to state it as something that the mayor should shoot for, or the mayor should hold it to be something that's important and hold out for, or be a recommendation, I'm a little reluctant to include. That's my thinking. I can persuade another way if you'd like. Councillor Zaret? Councillor Zaret?
Yeah, I feel that if the applicant did indicate that they were flexible in that area, that it's certainly worthwhile proposing it as an interest, and which I agree would probably fall under a recommendation versus some of the more strongly worded language. And so if our goal here is affordable housing, and we have a flexibility in this proposal where they basically said, hey, we can provide you more, and we're not tied to these market rate units, then I think it's at least worth asking essentially in the course of negotiation, which I feel essentially that's where this level of language would land, that we make a request of them. Hey, you had indicated during interviews that you're flexible on the market rate units, and can, would you consider making those affordable as opposed to, we insist that you make them affordable? So I don't have an issue with that under number three, and the council recommends that the agreement include affordable units in lieu of market rate. So that's my two cents.
Councillor Derby?
Yeah, so I would agree with Councillor Zaret on that. I think that's exactly what I was, what I was gonna suggest. You know, I think that when we were talking about this before, it is a little bit complicated because sometimes market rate units are used to kind of subsidize the affordable ones. So I think it does make sense in order to look at feasibility overall, to not require it, but to suggest it. So I agree.
I would agree that if we would put it in, if we were to put it in, that it'd be a recommendation and it's a suggestion. I just want, I'm thinking that if we, if the developer has a plan and the mayor, I can't imagine the mayor not pushing that point already to go and ask the question, geez, can we work something out that is all affordable? And I could just kind of hear the negotiations and the response, well, geez, do you want us to, what do you want us to give up? Is where it may get to, and well, I suppose if we put it in, it'll just call attention to it, and it is our recommendation, so. I don't have any further thoughts on it. I could be amiable to add it. I don't see a strong objection. So Ms. Ennis?
So with your permission, councillors, while you were discussing the matter, I did make some edits to the language so that you would have the draft language in front of you. So if you heard keyboards typing, and I'm happy to share that at this point, just to make sure.
I think this would be a great time.
Okay, great.
Councillor Derby, you have your hand raised? Is it still raised or?
No, I just, I have to manually put it down, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm just going to increase the text size.
Oh, please do. Thank you.
So what I've done, with your permission, Mr. Chairs, I've broken out so that which shall include the following two provisions and substantially include the following provision. So that's the one, two, and then three that you already have. And then I just started, because you were still talking, I haven't put a specific number of affordable units, but I've put it under the, the council recommends that the agreement. I can certainly move the order of those items around, and I can also make, increase the number of affordable units more specific based on the remainder of your conversation. But I just wanted to get it at least into the structure so it'd be easy for you all to see.
I think you've done a good job in summarizing that. I don't have any problem with the order as is, or in taking recommendations to change the order. To me, it really doesn't matter at that point with the recommendations, what the order is. Does anyone else have strong feelings about that? If not, and we're in agreement with the language, I'd be happy to entertain motion to make a recommendation.
Sorry.
Coming back with one more thought.
So, and this is nippy key, but I just, I like to think it through because I know when it hits the bigger audience. So, and this is nippy key, but I just, I like to think it through because I know when it hits the bigger audience, you know, it's the little things. So just on number three, it's, if you look at the recommendation part, number two, references like as described in the interview. And number three was also kind of, maybe it's like as described in the interview. I just don't want it to be confusing to anybody who's like, oh, we're just gonna ask them to increase the number of units, but it was kind of that, that was discussed like in the interview, and it's eight, this difference of eight. So I would just be able to clarify it because, you know, we have, we received a couple of questions from people. So that would just be my one last, I'm gonna stop talking.
I think you've done a good job with that addition since it does reference the interview, and that's a good point to make.
Good, thanks.
And Mr. Chair, with your permission, I do want to add the page number. I just realized as I'm looking at it, I didn't put the page number of where the purchase price was referenced. So I can do that at the close of this meeting, if that's okay. I won't flip through the document just now. But that would be just one change to your vote.
That would be great to do that. I have no objection to that. I don't think anyone else does. If so, speak now. I don't hear anything. With regard to the, just another cleanup thing, the language with regard to the proposal, I'm looking at number three, provide environmentally sensitive and the commitment on page eight of the proposal. Do we need to describe which proposal, the RFP?
Oh, I think it's referring back up to this paragraph here. I know I'm pointing at my screen, which you can't see me do, but it's the accept the proposal from Arch Communities LLC. So I could put in parentheses here, the proposal, and then that way, when people see the proposal later on, they understand that that's what it's referred to.
Right.
Yes.
Just in case there's any question.
Good call.
Any, anyone else? Shall we try again? I'd be happy to entertain a motion to make a recommendation to the city council next week. Counselor Zaret?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the motion as revised today on May fourth, twenty-twenty-three, the language that was provided in the memorandum from Ms. Ennis, the, use this language for recommendations to the full city council. Does that wind, was that, was that serpentuous enough?
Wow, I'm all twisted now. Is there a second?
Second.
There being motion and a second. Two, as amended to utilize the material presented by Ms. Ennis for presentation to the council, is in the affirmative, that would be approving that motion. Are there any ayes? Counselor Zaret?
Hi.
Counselor Derby?
Hi.
Counselor Quicensky? There are three. We have a vote and acceptance of three to zero on this matter. Is there any other business to discuss at this point? There being none, I'd be happy to take a motion to return.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? None. Counselor Derby?
Hi.
Counselor Zaret?
Hi.
I thank you all. I vote I, and I wanted to thank you all for your hard work. And we'll move this across the line next week. That's the plan. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.